So I'm waiting for my colleagues to join us on the dais. So we can call the meeting to order. Right now, we don't have quorum. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Here on Zoom, this is Justice Zia.
Dario, on your mark. All right, sounds good. Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, December 18th, 2024. My name is Vivian Malauulu. I am Board President of the Long Beach Community College District Board of Trustees. It is 5:47, and I am calling this meeting to order. At this time, I would like to ask our newly-elected trustee-elect, Dr. Annette Morton, to please lead us in the flag salute. If you would please do us the honor of leading us in the flag salute at your first board meeting.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Long Beach City College acknowledges our presence on the traditional ancestral land of the Gabrielino Tongva peoples. This land remains unceded territory. We acknowledge the painful history of genocide and forced removal from this territory. Long Beach City College honors and respects the Gabrielino Tongva ancestors and their connection to this land. For those of you who have never attended our board meeting, we do follow state and federal guidelines, and that is a mandated land acknowledgement that all public meetings must make public remark to. Item 2.4 on the agenda, Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please. I'm sorry, roll call.
Virginia Baxter?
Here.
Vivian Malauulu?
Here.
Annette Morton, who is in the audience until sworn in. Uduwak Joe Intuk?
Here.
Sunny Zia?
Here.
And Student Trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I will now turn the meeting over to our illustrious Superintendent President, Dr. Mike Munoz, who will preside over the oath of office and nomination of Board President. Once that is completed, we will resume the meeting with the new officers in place. Thank you all.
Thank you, President Malauulu. Before we start the next portion of our meeting, I would like to invite everyone who is currently sitting on the dais to take their seats in the audience. I ask for everyone's patience as we take a few minutes to find our seats and for us to set up the swearing-in ceremony. Thank you. So as everyone, as we kind of transition to this next part of the ceremony, if there's anyone who wishes to speak at any time, please make sure you fill out a speaker card and hand it to Michelle. Michelle, if you want to wave and just wanted to make sure everybody understood if they wanted to do that. All right, well, good evening, everyone. All right, let's try that again. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Good evening, trustees, colleagues, and honored guests. It is my pleasure to facilitate the swearing-in ceremony for the Long Beach Community College District Board of Trustees. Before we begin, I would like to recognize the elected officials and representatives who have joined us today. Let's start with our very own, President of the Board of Trustees, Vivian Malauulu. Vice President of the Board, Dr. Virginia Baxter. Trustee-elect, Dr. Annette Morton. Trustee, Uduwak Joe Intuk. Joining us virtually, Trustee Sunny Zia. And Student Trustee Gee. We also have with us tonight Assembly Member Joshua Lowenthal. From the city of Long Beach, we have Mayor Rex Richardson. City Attorney Don McIntosh. We have Vice Mayor Roberto Uranga. And Councilmember Tanua Thrash Intuk. From the city of Torrance, we have Councilmember Bridget Lewis. From the city of Bell Gardens, we have Mayor Jorge Chávez. And former Student Trustee, I might add. We also have representatives with us today from both state and local offices. Abigail Mejia with State Senator Lena Gonzalez. Valerie Rodriguez with Assembly Member Mike Gibson. Lynn Ward, representing Long Beach Councilmember Mary Zendejas. And Jeanette Christian, representing Supervisor Janice Hans Office. I'm looking at Carl Stacy. Am I missing anyone? If anyone I'm missing, please give me a signal so we acknowledge you before we move forward. All right, well, thank you all for joining us. We will begin our swearing-in ceremony with trustee Area 2, item 3.2. Trustee Vivian Malauulu will be sworn in by March Joint Powers Authority Chief Executive Officer, Dr. Grace Martin. If Dr. Martin and trustee Malauulu can please make their way up to the two microphones here in the middle of the floor, trustee Malauulu will also be joined by her daughter, Tessa Malauulu. And her family. And her mom.
Mom. We rehearsed, but not really. Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Vivian Malauulu.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation and purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation and purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter. Thank you.
Congratulations, trustee Malauulu. Thank you. Do you want to...
Good evening, everyone. This is not my speech. My speech will come in a few minutes from the dais, but Dr. Grace Martin does have a few words to say, so I'd like to introduce her. For those of you who have been a part of my journey from the very beginning, when I first got elected to the board, the person who swore me in in 2016 was my childhood best friend, who is an attorney with the Department of Justice. And she, we grew up in Carson together, went to elementary school together, and she went, lives in Sacramento, and flew down that day for my swearing-in. And it was very meaningful to me because I wanted to have someone who knew me from the very beginning, when I first came to this country. My second swearing-in in 2020 was during COVID. It was on Zoom. And the person who swore me in was a colleague of mine when I taught for LA Unified School District. At the time, he was the principal of Banning High School. And he and I started teaching together. Our first-year teachers, we were in those first-year teacher meetings, and he was a part of my academic educational journey, Mr. Rudy Mendoza, who is now a high-level administrator with LA Unified. And this time, diversity is very important to me. I should mention that. It's always been a very important part of my life. My best friend who swore me in, Ashante Norton, is African-American. Rudy Mendoza is Mexican-American. And this time, I wanted to have diversity on the dais. And I asked a very dear friend of mine, who is family by marriage, who is Samoan. Her family is Samoan. And she is an accomplished military veteran. We speak the same language in workforce development. She's done incredible things in the inland empire. Her resume runneth over. And when I asked her to perform my oath of office, I did so with the intention of, A, meeting my diversity factor. Even though I have a lot of respect and admiration for my colleagues, who are also elected officials, I've always wanted to be sworn in by normal, everyday people because that's who I represent. So when I asked Dr. Grace Martin to swear me in, she was like, why? And you'll have to learn her story, her incredible story, to know why this is so important to me, to have a Pacific Islander woman accomplished in the world of workforce development. You know, she's Dr. Annette, excuse me, Dr. Annette Morton. Dr. Grace Martin, somewhere where I'm striving to get to. This is very symbolic to me. So now she would like to say a few words. So that puts a little context into how she's here. Thank you, Grace. There you go. It's okay. I'm cramped. Honorable Long Beach City College Board of Trustees, distinguished guests, family members, friends, and members of the public, good evening and happy holidays. I'm Dr. Grace Martin. It is such an honor to be here and to be part of a ceremony for one of the most dynamic women that I know. Vivian and I are cousins by marriage. I am on her Samoan side of the family, so we're cousins. But when you hear our stories, our stories bind us as sisters because we were both born into humble beginnings, both fed through the umbilical cord of poverty. She from Honduras and me from Samoa. We both came to the U.S. from opposite parts of the world, but as immigrants drawn to a beacon of hope and opportunity, and both used education as a tool to shamelessly pursue a life of purpose and service. And she has taken her journey to levels that I can only stand and be in awe of. Her energy and fearless commitment to education and perfection are unparalleled. Vivian is a rainmaker. You can't talk to her without feeling inspired to do something meaningful with your life. I think some of you here might understand that. In fact, during COVID, I invited her to be on my podcast on workforce as a guest. And during her interview, she told me, I'm sorry, she inspired me to start a nonprofit to work with high schools and train high school students in career development. So I did. And today, we've helped over 50 high school students get scholarships for summer internships and inspire students to go to college or join the military. That nonprofit is still changing lives today. And wouldn't you know it, you don't have to go to a third-world country to find kids that are looking for hope and opportunity. They're right here in our communities. Mother Teresa wrote in her book, No Greater Love, "We must never forget that we are bound towards perfection and should aim ceaselessly at it." Area 2, you've re-elected a public servant that is committed to perfection for LBCC. I'm so proud of you, Viv, and so proud of sharing in your moment today. Malauta poai, malolun saai, malauta wivi. Congratulations, and God bless us.
Thank you so much. We will now move to Area 4, item 3.3. Dr. Annette Morton will be sworn in by Long Beach Mayor, the Honorable Rex Richardson. She will also be accompanied by her husband, James Trotter Jr., and daughter, Ashley Newsbaum. Newsbaum, welcome.
You stay with your family, Ashley. Well, before we get started, I just want to say first what an honor it is to have the opportunity to swear you in this evening. Only the second African-American woman to ever serve in the history of Long Beach City College Board of Trustees, and we recognize your trailblazing leadership for that. Let's hear it for this trailblazer, Dr. Morton. I'll also say, I'll tell you, as a husband of Dr. Nina Richardson, it is a family affair. So we certainly recognize your family. And Ashley was interning on my campaigns when she was a kid. So it's a very special moment to see you as a 10-year educator, a doctor from Pepperdine, someone who we know has the right values, step up in this vocation of service and leadership. I also want to say you are stepping up to help lead an incredible institution, the greatest community college, greatest city college in all of America, Long Beach City College, which, I tell you, it has some pep in its step right now, right? I don't know that I've ever seen a bond measure pass with 70%. That, what a vote of confidence and mandate that your leadership has here at Long Beach City College. So we look forward to continuing our partnership on the Long Beach College promise, making sure people have access to education. Our housing promise, our partnerships on housing in North and other areas of town. And thanks to the voters, with Measure JB, the Long Beach Jobs Promise, where now it's official, Long Beach City College students get a preference on city jobs in the city of Long Beach. So we look forward to continuing our incredible partnership. Now let's get this show on the road. All right, are you ready?
I am ready.
All right. I state your name.
I, Annette Morton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter. Upon which.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor?
So apparently, we all got the great memo today. Right? You got the memo? Rex.
All right. Thank you. And now we are moving on to item 3.4, presentation and remarks from elected officials. I have a list of elected officials and representatives who would like to make a presentation. If you can please make the presentation at one of the two microphones, which will be right here, just kidding. We're going to have you present here at the podium. And with that, I'd like to invite up Assembly Member Josh Lowenthal for the first presentation, followed by Abigail Mejia with State Senator Lena Gonzalez's office, and then with Mayor Jorge... Jorge. Thank you.
What's up, Vikings? Let's go, let's go. Okay, first of all, it is an honor to be here and so critically important to be here. We all understand the continuum between the State of California and Long Beach City College and the education system here, and how vitally important it is to have deep relationships built of trust, built of mentorship and otherwise. And I'm looking forward to having two mentors here to teach me the value of our community college system and how the state needs to keep up with the trailblazing efforts that are happening here at Long Beach City College. But let me take my Assembly Member hat off for one brief second and talk as a stakeholder in this district, as somebody who lives here. I don't just want to congratulate you two. I want to congratulate all of us. All of us for having these leaders elected, you know, to lead us here at the community college. There is a responsibility of education leaders that's completely different than any other level of government. Because in every level of government, we're trying to solve the problems of right now, the things that are right in front of us. It's like a Rubik's Cube you're trying to solve. But education leaders have to do more than that. They have to solve the problems of right here, right now, and they have to provide a pathway and a vision for the future in caring, you know, and fomenting the leaders of tomorrow. So this isn't just congratulations for them. This is congratulations for all of us because of that. And what we know from Vivian and Annette is that they have a special calling. A very, very special calling. And you can't mail that in, right? You can see it in education, when people really deeply care, you know, when they're thinking selflessly about today and about the future. And we have that in these two leaders. So it is a joy, it is an honor, it is a privilege. I am proud of you both, and I am proud of all of us for electing two incredible leaders to lead us. Thank you so much.
I'd also like to also invite up City Councilwoman Tanua Thrash Intuk to say a few words too as well. Unley?
Thank you.
I thought the senator was next. Okay. All right, well, good evening, everyone. As you can see, this is actually my first official opportunity to say, besides last night's chambers, I'm City Councilwoman Tanua Thrash Intuk. So I'm a little new at this. I thought the senator was going to go next, but that's okay. Tonight, I want to congratulate two women who are taking up on the mantle of continuing to ensure that the education in our city and our region is excellent. First, to Dr. Annette Morton. You have worked tirelessly over the years, ensuring that we not only elect, but we also educate young people in such a way that they are ready to take on the challenges that are before us here. And tonight, one of the people who asked me to make sure that I was here so that I could share the personal connection and just be reminded of why we do what we do in terms of stepping into public office. And that is Vivian Malauulu. You see, Vivian and I met when we were young girls in high school. During that time, I would say that, you know, for some people, they run after and hope for leadership. They try to become leaders, Vivian. Because I've known you as long as I have, you are a leader. You were born a leader. As such, Vivian walked that campus and showed me what it meant to be a leader in ASB. She served as our student body president, and upon graduation, handed the torch off to me, and that was none other than Banning High School. I mention that because I see the entire family is in that B-house red. So I'm glad to see that here. And I didn't get that memo, so I'm sorry about that. I have on my blue. Before today, I just also want to say that the mayor mentioned that part of what we're doing in these roles is ensuring that people have access to the kinds of quality jobs that are out there. Measure JB being passed at the city level provides us with an opportunity to make sure that Long Beach Community College students have a preference, have a prioritization in being hired with our city. But the other element is that we have passed... But the other element is that we have passed Measure AC, which was also mentioned, Affordable College. And as a result of those resources, we will be able to have the facilities to make sure that we are preparing people for public safety and healthcare and education careers. And I know that you being on this board has been part of that leadership. So I came by here tonight to say congratulations to Dr. Annette Morton and to congratulate a great friend and a great leader around education, and that is Vivian Malauulu. Congratulations.
Thank you, Councilmember. At this time, I'd like to invite up Vice Mayor Roberto Uranga to join us to say a few words.
As Vivian said earlier, you know, do the church thing, get together. Well, doesn't mean you have to be quiet either. Tonight is a fun night. Tonight is a night to celebrate and enjoy, have fun with each other, commiserate, and get to know each other again. For me, it's somewhat of a homecoming. I was here in 2000, in 2000, I first got elected. And then I was moved on in 2014 to the city council. And I've been there now three terms. I was four terms here at City College. It's a whole lot of changes. The mayor was correct about Long Beach being an education city. We believe in our educational institutions. We support our community colleges. We support our university. And because of that, we created the College Promise, which will take us to the next level of service. And when I moved on, I said the College Promise has got to be more than just education. It's got to be about jobs. It's got to be about internships. And so we got the city to join the College Promise. And now the city of Long Beach is part of that in providing jobs and internships for graduates of City College, the university, and students who graduate from high school have an expectation that once they're done, there's a job waiting for them. And if not a job, an internship, which then will take them above and beyond everywhere else through the world. So with that, I want to welcome Vivian. Do again, her third term as Area Two District Council trustee. An area that I represented for 14 years. And you're doing a good job here because all you have to do is look around and see the changes that this college has gone through. Dr. Morton, I congratulate you on your election. I think you do very, very well. You bring a lot of skills to the table. And I'm sure that the college will benefit from your expertise and experience. Intuck, where's the hoodwink? Where's the hoodwink? Hoodwink? Yo, last night, when I was sworn in as vice mayor, I was the only male among women. That's you now. That's you now. You're blessed among women. And we need more women, obviously, in the elected office. And I'm glad to see that we at Long Beach are doing that. So thank you very much. Congratulations to our people who are continuing to serve and our newly elected trustee. Welcome.
Great, good evening, everyone. It's a great honor to be here on behalf of State Senator Lena Gonzalez. It's amazing to see two women who have been trailblazers, who are so committed to our Long Beach community, to our students. I've had the great honor to have trustee Vivian Malauulu as my professor. So I know that her passion and dedication goes way beyond. So I'm so grateful that you'll continue to serve. And trustee Annette Morton, you are just phenomenal. We are so excited that you're in this position and just the amazing work that you'll be doing. Another senator, we love LBCC. We love to brag about LBCC when she's in Sacramento. And we're so excited for the next upcoming year. Congratulations. I do have some flowers on behalf of the senator and some certificates. So I love you both. Congratulations.
Thank you. I would be remiss, when I was doing introductions, to not acknowledge that our fire chief is with us, Chief Buchanan and Long Beach City College Hall of Famer as well. Welcome. Just a couple more folks that are going to speak. Sal DiCostanzo. Sal, are you here with us tonight? Please join us. And then we'll conclude with George Malauulu. While Sal makes his way up, can we have a big roaring round of applause for Mayor Jorge?
Thank you. What a time. Feels great to be back at my home here at Long Beach City College. You know, it's been six years since I've been here. I used to sit right there where G is as a student trustee and graduated in 2018. And it just feels good to come home here at LBCC. Let's go, let's go ahead and get a "Go Vikings." I love that. Let's give a big round of applause for that. You know, this is where the servitude began, really. And I think it's trustees' members, board members, city council members that have sort of shaped me to be where I am today, right? I'm proud to be a representative for my hometown in Bell Gardens up the 710 freeway. And our issues that we face, not only here at the community college, but throughout the region, we're all in this together, right? We like to say that it takes the village to raise a child. And it's programs, it's curriculums, it's the teachers, it's the advisors, it's counselors, et cetera. What makes us us, really? So today, we're here to celebrate trustee Malauulu for all the incredible work. And newly trustee Dr. Norton, congratulations as well. And I have two certificates, and I want to go ahead and read each of them, beginning with trustee Malauulu. Certificate of Recognition on behalf of the city of Bell Gardens, honoring Vivian Malauulu. On behalf of the Bell Gardens City Council, we extend our heartfelt congratulations on your decision to seek another term in the Long Beach Community College District Board of Trustees representing Area Two. Your dedication to education and outstanding leadership has positively impacted students, families, and community. We are grateful for your hard work and continued commitment to fostering growth and opportunity. Sign Jorge Chavez, Mayor of the City of Bell Gardens, along with the Bell Gardens City Council. For Dr. Annette Morton, I also want to read the certificate of recognition honoring Dr. Annette Morton. On behalf of the Bell Gardens City Council, we congratulate you on your election to the Long Beach Community College District Board of Trustees representing Area Four. Your commitment to public service and education will make a lasting impact to the students and community of Long Beach. We commend you on this well-deserved achievement and look forward to your continued leadership and contribution. Sign Jorge Chavez, Mayor for the Bell Gardens City Council, for the Bell Gardens City, along with the Bell Gardens City Council. Thank you so much, and we'll go ahead and take a picture.
All right, good evening. My name is Sal DiCostanzo, and it is my privilege to represent ILWU Local 13 here tonight and say a few words on behalf of our sister, Union Sister Vivian Malauulu. Our president, Gary Herrera, sends his regrets for not being able to join us here tonight and has asked me to read the following comments in his absence. The International Longshore and Warehouse Union represents workers up and down the West Coast of the United States, Canada, Alaska, as well as in Hawaii. Local 13 represents approximately 13,000 full and part-time longshore workers who are integral to our local, regional, and statewide economic and national security interests. It is no small feat to represent this workforce and ensure that their personal well-being is considered while moving the nation's cargo. In her role as a rank-and-file worker, as well as a union representative, Vivian has always performed her job to the best of her ability. That level of commitment has no doubt also served her well as an elected official to the Long Beach Community College Board of Trustees. Her efforts have not been a one-off, but rather has been demonstrated now in this third successful campaign. The men and women of Local 13 are proud of all of her many accomplishments and will continue to support her ongoing contributions to the community she loves. Now, having said that, I'm the one who's here, so I'd like to make a couple of comments of my own. I have known Vivian now for a little over five years. We have worked together on everything, from the day-to-day running of the local up to, you know, very important legislation. And I'm going to share a couple of things with you that are not a secret. Many of you already know this, but Vivian is very, very bright. She is very hardworking. She's not just naturally intelligent, but she's also very learned. She takes the time to understand issues, to be articulate on those issues, and to, you know, bring her full passion to whatever she's doing. Vivian is not a quitter. She gives her best to everything that she does. So over the last eight years that she's been here, I am not surprised to learn that LBCC is knocking on the door of the top 100, probably the top 50, maybe the top 10, number one. I mean, who knows, right? But that's what we all know. I would like to share a little insight that I've had that, in my humble opinion, is the biggest compliment that I can offer. And that is the beautiful family that her and George have created and who is mostly sitting here in the front row. It is hard to raise kids today. I think we can all get an amen, right? Amen? There are a lot of challenges. There are a lot of obstacles. But I'm not going to lie and say that I know her children well. But the few times that I have met them, they are respectful. They are accomplished. They are engaging with adults that they don't know. You don't get that much these days. At a recent birthday party that I was able to attend, I saw the fruits of that labor on full display. And George, you get some of this credit too, but right now we're talking about Vivian, okay? These kids were working. At that party, they made sure that everything that needed to be done was done, and it was done well, and it was done with love. But you may fear your parent and do what they tell you to do, but when you do it from a place of love, you know that you've done something right. And if she did that with these kids, imagine what she can do with the kids at this college. Congratulations, Vivian. God bless you, and God bless Long Beach City College.
Sal, it's my turn. God is good? All the time. So with that being said, God is the reason. God is the reason for everything. Both of my, both of my grandfathers were pastors. So God comes first in my life and as well as my family's life. And with that, just knowing that she's going to go ahead and step into the office once again. And this is the place that she conducts her business, as well as at work, as well as at home. But just knowing that she does a great job in everything she does and just the compliments that come, that are raved from the people that are here standing, as well as people that were in the reception, just blesses my heart, and I know it blesses her children as well. The other one, the fourth one's not here today, but I know he's here in spirit. But baby, I just want to make sure you understand that you're here in prayer. We're always behind you 100% in everything you do. Just understand that you have a lot of people that are in our village, so let's not let them down. So God bless you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you all to our special guests for being here tonight. We are now moving on to item 3.5. We have one more presentation in recognition of our outgoing 2024 President of the Long Beach Community College District Board of Trustees, Vivian Malauulu. If trustee Malauulu can please join me up front. In recognition of your term as Board President, we'd like to present you with this plaque. And we're going to take one photo, and then if the rest of the trustees can join us up front, as well as any other, is it just the trustees? And families of the trustees as well. Thank you, trustee Malauulu. We took our quick photo. So at this time, I'm going to ask for our audience patience once more as we move back to the dais. We'll have a brief pause before we move to trustee comments from the dais and the reorganization of the Board of Trustees. So stay tuned. At this time, we will move to item 4.1. I would like to invite our newly sworn-in trustees to make their comments. We will go in order of the ceremony, trustee Malauulu, and then trustee Morton. After their comments, trustee Intuck, trustee Baxter, and trustee Zia may also offer comments. Each trustee will have five minutes each. Board President Malauulu, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you. Once again, everyone, thank you for being here this evening. It really means a lot to us. We know that this is a busy season, the holiday season. We know that you could be out there doing your shopping, you could be spending time with your own family, so it means a lot that you support us, and it means a lot that you support LBCC. The work that we do here on campus is reflective of what the community pours into us. And with that, I mentioned when we were at the reception that there's a long list of people we should always acknowledge, but every time someone does that, people are left out unintentionally, and it just, I've learned not to do that. I've learned to send personal thank yous along the way. There are some people that I am going to single out, just in a show of gratitude for the hard work that they do. Before I get to that, though, I just want to let you know that some of you receive little bags, little gift bags, little thank yous. So, I pretty much wrote my statement on that bag, in the card in there, and you'll notice that it's just a brief thank you, but mostly, we're outlining the work that we do here in the district. And the reason why is I want to take away from me, and I want to highlight what the college is doing, what Long Beach City College is doing, what we've done here on this campus and on the TCC, TTC campus, I'm still getting used to the new name. But it's important for us to acknowledge the work that all of our constituents are doing, our students, our faculty, and our staff, and our community members. I see some of my neighbors here from West Long Beach, I see neighbors from Wrigley, I see neighbors from Signal Hill, I see neighbors from parts of the city who are represented by other, my colleagues on the dais, and that just goes to show how much we care about this district. The overwhelming 70% passage of Measure AC, again, that just goes to show how much you care. So, with that, I'd like to ask you to continue to partner with us. I'm trilingual. I speak education, I speak labor, and I speak community. Those are the three languages that I hold near and dear to my heart. Next to my faith and next to my family, those are the three things that I strive for every day with passion, and I try to give education, labor, and community, everything I have, but I can't do it alone. So, the people that I really want to acknowledge tonight are fortunate for me, they're all sitting in this room. I have to acknowledge Dr. Mike Munoz. By far, in my experience in the eight years that I've been on the board, he works around the clock, he's selfless, he's giving, he's visionary, he puts out fires I don't even know exists. Before I wake up in the morning, he tells me about something that happened late the night before or early in the morning that he's already taken care of. He makes our job as trustees so much easier, so thank you, Dr. Munoz. And I'd also like to acknowledge Michelle Reese. I know she's not expecting it, but she is our sole board secretary. Now, Dr. Munoz has five bosses. Michelle works for five trustees. We all have different personalities, we all have different preferences. I like my calendar to look a certain way, I prefer texting, I like things to be a certain way, and she always remembers. So, I can only imagine what my other four colleagues like, and if you do for them what you do for me, you are a rock star. This was my second time serving as Board President. The first time serving as Board President, we had, in 2019, 2020, we had major personnel changes and a pandemic. And in one weekend, we, we spent one weekend shutting down the district temporarily, transitioning to online learning, 1,300 classes in a 48-hour period went online. And all of that, we did, I think I slept maybe two hours in that weekend, talking to the executive vice presidents, the vice president, our, just our entire executive cabinet. And the reason we did that is because we did not want to shut down. We wanted to maintain a continuity of services for our students, and being Board President in 2020, frankly, was very difficult. We had no fun, no fun. So, I made up for it this time. I don't know if you attended any, any of our events, but I kind of went two times, twice as hard, because in 2020, everything was on Zoom, remote, and it was just drudge work. But this time, I am grateful for the work that we've done and the support that I've had, and I did have fun serving as Board President this term, so thank you very much for that. Then, I would like to acknowledge my family. Because when you see me, you know, you see me once a month during a board meeting, and that's it. But you don't see the everyday, the 24 hours, the, the early morning phone calls, the late-at-night phone calls, the emergencies, you don't see that, but my family does. And between my husband and my four kids, and, and one of my kids is at Fresno State, they, they made a bowl game, we're going to be in Boise for the Potato Bowl, so my son couldn't come down from Fresno because he's at practice. And, but my other children are here, my mom is here, my sister are here, my cousin and his wife are here, my husband's family's here, and those are the people who fuel me. Those are the people who keep it, keep it real for me at home. I love you, I thank you, my mom listens to me, vent, she takes road trips with me, I'm on the phone, she hears it all. And my mom just looks at me and says, I know you enjoy it, I know, I think you're crazy, but I know you're good at it, so keep doing what you're doing. So, thank you to my family, I love you all so, so much. And lastly, you, our faculty, our staff, our classified, our students, our ASB, our student trustee, our ASB leadership, our students, our athletic teams, my ASU, EDD cohorts, we're in this doctoral program together, my classmates, thank you, because you make it, you make it easy and you make it bearable. So, blessings to all of you for a happy and enjoyable holiday season. It's been a privilege and a joy to serve you, and I look forward to another term, four more years, being on this board. Thank you to everyone I serve in, representing in the west part of the city, the south-central part of the city, and Signal Hill. I'm here for you, you know how to reach me, and I'm always going to be there for you. Thank you, everyone.
Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you all for attending tonight's swearing-in. Congratulations again to trustee Malauulu for her reelection to the board.
Thank you.
I am deeply honored to be sworn in as a member of the Long Beach City College Board of Trustees. Tonight marks a significant milestone in my life journey, and I am filled with gratitude and purpose as I step into this role. First, I want to thank the LBCC District 4 residents for placing their trust in me. Your support inspires me to work tirelessly on your behalf and that of the entire community. To my fellow board colleagues, President Munoz, students, faculty, staff, community leaders, partners, I'm humbled and excited to join such a dedicated group of individuals who share a passion for education and an unwavering commitment to the mission of LBCC. A special thank you to Mayor Rex Richardson for administering my oath of office tonight and for your support. Your belief in my dedication and service to the Long Beach community means a great deal. To all my family, friends, colleagues, community partners, many of whom are here in person and via live stream, thank you for standing by me every step of the way. I want to especially acknowledge my loving husband, James, and my beautiful baby girl, Ashley. Your love and support have been my foundation, and I couldn't have done this without you. To my parents, who are watching via live stream, happy birthday, Dad. Thank you for being my eternal role models. You both have shown me the power of resilience, compassion, and lifelong learning. My path to LBCC Board of Trustees really began with a deep passion for education, instilled in me by my parents. Growing up as the daughter of an Air Force service member, I experienced the unique opportunities that come with frequently moving and immersing myself in different cultures. Those experiences shaped me into a lifelong learner and fueled my belief in the transformative power of education. I am proud to be a first-generation college graduate, earning my degree in communications from Cal Poly Pomona, followed by Mass, followed by my Masters in Business Administration and Doctorate in Education from Pepperdine. These achievements paved my way for a decade-long of, of a career in higher education, where I have seen firsthand the critical importance of access to affordable, high-quality education. It truly is the key to opportunity and empowerment. As I step into this role, I am committed to advancing the mission of LBCC and addressing the challenges that lie ahead. Together with my board colleagues, President Munoz, faculty, and staff, we will build on the college's success and continue to work towards a future that prioritizes our students and community. Among our priorities, thanks to the passage of Measure AC, is revitalizing our campus facilities to enhance, access equipped our students with the skills needed to meet the demands of our regional workforce and pursue their future educational goals. These efforts will only benefit, will not only benefit our current students, but also lay the groundwork for future generations. Collaboration will be central to our efforts, and by working together, we will ensure that LBCC remains a vital resource for everyone in our community who seeks affordable, accessible higher education. I am dedicated to fostering an environment of respect, open communication, and teamwork, values that are essential to creating the positive impact we envision. I look forward to engaging with my fellow board colleagues to learn from your experiences and collaborating on initiatives that support student success. Together, we can expand pathways to opportunity through initiatives like dual enrollment, strengthen workforce development programs, deepen partnerships with regional universities, colleges, and K-12 institutions to ensure that our students have the tools they need to thrive. And in closing, it is an incredible privilege to serve this community. I am honored for the opportunity to contribute to LBC's bright future and to continue the success of the Long Beach community. Thank you all, and happy holidays.
Oh, okay, that's not those. I, I thought I was last, so I'm third, I'm happy. Good evening, everyone. This meeting is always so impressive to me because it reintroduces us to people who have spent a great deal of time giving to Long Beach City College. Vivian, I remember when she ran the first time, and she did a super job, she's a great salesperson. You'd buy anything from her, wouldn't you? You know, she's got that personality, and she has dedicated herself to making Long Beach City College the best. Annette, you're new, and I know, though, you and I met before the election, and I said to her, if you win, they'll be perfectly fine with me because I'm very impressed with you and, and all you've accomplished, and I want to congratulate you on your victory, and I know you're going to do a super job. She's very down-to-earth, very thoughtful, can tell, she just doesn't speak off the top of her head like I do. And she, you know, really thinks a lot about things before she gives an answer. So, this group is going to be a wonderful group, and we're all going to make Long Beach City College even better. I always say it's the best community college in California, maybe the best community college in the United States. I've been affiliated with this institution for over 50 years and have seen the changes, and I want to salute Dr. Munoz also. He really spends time thinking about the students and how we can make this institution better. He's made so many changes, you know, you think, boy, you're around for, we're almost 100 years old, what, what more could there be done? But there's a lot of wonderful things that have been done to make the experience at the college better. And I know that the students appreciate that, and they, and they need it. Our students are very deserving, and they just need a little help. And I know, for Isla Horell, who spoke tonight, our mayor, the mayor of Bel Gardens, not Rex, you were wonderful too, but, you know, they have tremendous potential, and they really want to do a good job, and I salute them all, and I salute my fellow members.
Thank you. Thank you. Trustee Intuck?
Welcome, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here. This happens every two years that we have election results, and new folks come and people get reelected, and I'm, I'm so happy to have two good friends joining. You know, we're all educators, we all believe in the power of education and changing people's lives. You know, Vivian, welcome back. We, we've known each other for many, many years, friends, colleagues, family events, and I'm really excited and proud that you're back. You've done so much with the Labor Center, our parent-focused policy, workforce development. You know, I'm really excited, I think in a year and a half from now, we are going to be able to call you Dr. Malauulu. And so, that's another day I'm looking forward to, and I know it wouldn't be possible if you weren't here at Long Beach City College, learning and applying that to your academic endeavors. Dr. Morton, you know, it's wonderful to have an experienced higher education professional here, a bridge to Long Beach State, someone that understands our community. We've known each other for, I think, a decade now, and so, it's, you know, I think we were at a Dem Club meeting, you came up like, hi, I'm new, how do I get involved? I said, well, there's a lot of things you can do, and here you are. And so, I'm so excited you're here. You know, folks who don't know, she's a published author in women's leadership. I was talking to some folks earlier, I said, read her book, if you want to know, read her book. She gets a couple royalties if you buy it, read the book. But it's, it's exciting times, historical election, it was a team effort, and just thank you for stepping up. I know it's really difficult to get people to run for office, and so, you took the leap of faith and it made it happen, so thank you for that, and look forward to serving with you over the next four years.
Thank you. And joining us virtually, trustee Zia?
Thank you. So sorry I couldn't be with you today, I had surgery, and on top of that, I came down with the flu. I want to congratulate you, I would have congratulated you in person, but I don't think you want to get sick. I really appreciate the remarks that were made. There are quite a bit of celebrities in the House. I want to thank Speaker Pro Tem Lowenthal for making his fellow member of the tribe yours truly very proud. Every day, I see Ray Lawson in the House, thank you, Ray, for being here, and everyone who's here. We have such a great community, and it is a true pleasure and honor serving you, and I look forward to working with you. Annette, welcome. It's wonderful to see you on the dais. I look forward to healing soon, recovering, and taking the seat next to you.
We will now move to item 4.2, the annual reorganization of the Board of Trustees, nomination for President of the Board. Pursuant to Board Policy and Regulation 2015.1, at the annual organizational meeting, the Board of Trustees shall elect officers for the succeeding year therefore. I hereby open the floor for nominations for President of the Board for 2025.
I'd like to nominate Vice President Baxter as President.
Okay, trustee Zia. We have a nomination for trustee Baxter as Vice President?
No, as President.
As President, excuse me. Is there a second?
Can I second myself? Am I allowed to second myself? I second him.
Okay, we have a second. Are there any other nominations?
Yes, I'd like to nominate trustee Intuck for President.
Okay, we have another nomination on the floor. Trustee Intuck?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Morton. Then I declare the nominations are closed. So, we will take a vote on, and I'm going to look at Board Counsel, where's Board Counsel, you mean? We'll take a vote on the first motion and then the second, correct? Okay, so, for the first motion related to Dr. Baxter, we will have to do, for, for President, we have to do a voice vote because trustee Zia is not with us today, correct? So, Secretary Reese?
Advisory vote, student trustee Gonzalez? And this, I'm sorry, this would be for Dr. Baxter as President.
I vote for myself.
Student trustee Gonzalez? Student trustee Gonzalez?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Nay.
Annette Morton?
Nay.
Udoakjo Intuck?
Nay.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion did not pass. We'll move on to the second motion. This is for trustee Intuck to serve as board president.
Student trustee Gonzalez?
Nay.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Annette Morton?
Aye.
Udoakjo Intuck?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Nay.
Motion passes. Congratulations, board president. Intuck?
Congratulations.
The new board president will now facilitate the remainder of the board meeting. The new president now presides over the meeting. We will be taking a brief break, but I'll turn it over to board president Intuck to lead us into our recess.
So we're just going to recess, right? All right, I call for recess.
Do you want to recess, or do you want to do the vice president?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Let's do that. Let's do that first. So let's open the floor for vice president of the board. We'll take nominations. Trustee Malauulu?
I nominate trustee Baxter for vice president.
Trustee Malauulu? Who's the second?
I'm going to second myself.
All right, it's been moved and seconded for nomination. Any other nominations for vice president?
Yes, I would like to nominate trustee Dr. Annette Morton for vice president.
All right, we have the motion.
We need a second.
I'll second that motion. Any other nominations? Seeing and hearing none, we'll also do a roll call vote through the first motion and then through the second. So Secretary Reese?
Student trustee Gonzalez. This is for a vice president. Trustee Baxter.
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Nay.
Udoakjo, I'm sorry, Annette Morton?
Nay.
Udoakjo Intuck?
Nay.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
The motion fails. We'll go to the next motion.
And this is for Annette Morton as vice president, student trustee Gonzalez.
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Annette Morton?
Aye.
Udoakjo Intuck?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
The motion passes. Congratulations, Vice President Morton. So at this time, we'll take a break and reorder the seating, or we're going to continue on. Okay, and then, all right, no worries. Sorry, I didn't have the paperwork. All right, here we go. We're going to continue on to the next agenda item here, doing the appointments, and then we'll take recess. Okay, 4.4, representative of the Los Angeles School Trustees Association. If trustee Baxter is willing, I'd like to nominate her for LACSA.
I'm going to decline. The reason is I have two board meetings on the same night that they meet, so it's impossible for me to attend the meetings.
Trustee Malauulu, are you interested?
I would like to defer to trustee Dr. Morton if there's one of those that she would prefer to serve on, and I'm happy to serve on whichever she passes on, whatever might be good experience for you, Dr. Morton. There's the LA County School Trustees Association, there's the LA County Committee on School District Organization, and then there's the Board Member Subcommittee. Are there any of those that you'd like to serve on?
The Los Angeles County School District Organization.
Okay, and Dr. Baxter, is there one in particular you'd like to serve on?
I'd like to know when, excuse me, I'm sorry, Annette, which one did you say you'd do?
The School District Organization.
Okay.
The LACO?
I'd like to know when they meet.
The LACSA, which is the first item. They're the third Monday at 5:30.
Yeah, see, again, I'm in a lot of organizations, and those are when the meetings are, on Mondays and Tuesdays. So I'm going to say neither.
Okay, I'll do the other one, trustee Intuck.
Great.
And then...
Is it the Audit Committee?
I'd like to continue with the Audit Committee. If no one else will do that, I'll continue on that one.
Okay, for 4.4, we're doing appointing trustee Malauulu to the LACSA Committee as a representative. For 4.5, we're appointing Vice President Morton to the LACO Committee on School District Organization. And then on Audit Committee, trustee Malauulu, you want to do that, or Vice President Morton?
I think it was the other way.
It was?
I think, I'm sorry, I think 4.4 was Dr. Morton. Is that correct?
No, I'm 4.5.
Yeah, there's LACO, and then there's LACSA.
Oh, sorry, 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 sorry.
Very similar acronyms.
Sorry. You're right.
All right. Boom, boom. Then we're at 4.6, Audit Committee. You want to do Audit Committee? Okay.
I could stay on that.
All right.
Does anybody else want that?
I wouldn't mind being on the Audit Committee, but I don't want to take it from you.
No, you could do it. You could do it.
All right. We'll go with trustee Baxter on the Audit Committee as additional member, myself, and then...
Can we just ask if anybody is opposed to these, just for the...
These are appointments of the president, I believe, so we don't need to vote on them.
Correct.
Right.
All right, so we'll go to 4.7. Now we can take a brief recess. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. We're going to take about five minutes to move our seats around. Thank you.
Thank you.[1011.94]
All right, folks, let's get started. Welcome back. We're back from recess. We are at the Long Beach Community College District Board of Trustees. It's December 18th. We're going back into regular session here. And we're going to start with 5.1, our public comment section. There's a total of three minutes per speaker for maximum 20 minutes per topic. We do have several speaker cards. When I call your name, please come up to the podium and give your remarks. And you'll see the timer on the the screen above. I have Chan Hopson from the Kamir Kamai Parents Association. Chan.
Jumribsu, President of the Board, President Intuck for getting elected today. Congratulations. It is a privilege to come here in front of you, Honorable Board Member, the Board of Trustee, President Mike Munoz, and all the executive staff. I'm very happy that even though I'm getting delayed because the person that gave me the ride came late from his work too. But I'm very happy that I have the opportunity to come to witness all the process prosperity and the progress of the good development in the LBCC, the school that is my heart and my soul since 1980. This is the school that I love. This is the school that gave me the start, the success, and also the prosperity. And I love this school from the bottom of my heart. I'm here tonight to congratulate for the two wonderful women that I knew. First, Honorable Board of Trustee Vivian Malalulu for getting elected for the third term. Congratulations. I don't have any word to express my happiness and my pride to be so proud of you as a woman that got elected for the third term. Congratulations and thank you to have you and get to know you. And also Dr. Annette Morton, that I did not know that she come back to Long Beach because what we know of so many years ago that she left Long Beach. And I'm very happy to see her name that she got elected as a Board of Trustee to serve the school that so much love and work so much to make a lot of difference, to cultivate all the young people, young students from a diverse background to become a future leader. And tonight, I would like to present you a bouquet for each one of you to congratulate you and put my hope, my trust in both of you that work with the existing board member to lead the LBCC to be the greatest school in the state of California and in the nation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chan.
Would you come to?
We'll send her up with the flowers. Thank you. And Chan is one of our Long Beach City College Hall of Fame recipients. So thank you, Chan. Next, we're going to have Thero Golden. You want to make your way to the podium?
Good afternoon, Board Members and Staff. My name is Thero Golden. I'm a resident of West Long Beach, a constituent of Miss Malalulu. I call her Miss Vivian. And it's honor to see Miss Annette Morton also sworn in tonight. And I am a graduate of Long Beach City College. And that helped me in a large way in my career and to some of the things I'm doing today, understanding science and numbers together. And it is important that the work that's done here is continued and help the city. The city, in my opinion, is at a threshold where it is challenged by one of the most important issues of the 20th century, 21st century, and that's pollution. The largest polluter in this county is the ports of Long Beach and Los Angeles. The surrounding areas with 2.1 million people, it's called within the 617 community, is experiencing, depending on what study you you see, an eight to a 15-year reduction in life expectancy. The 15-year study was done by the city of Long Beach, and its title, Where You Live Make a Difference. This institution can help this city and the city's government come to what I call a soft landing. It is nothing less than the effort that was used by the federal government after World War II to reduce dependency on the production of arms to a civil government. And it's a balance. They did a decent job, and for that reason, there was no major inflation or outbreaks until in the 70s. But at the same time, we are concerned with death and the continued use of petroleum and the reluctance of some officials in this jurisdiction to not want to pay attention to death. They prefer to champion jobs. That is a loser, in my opinion, because if the people are not here to work the jobs, why are they going to be? It's one of those things you call an oxymoron, or did the chicken get here before the egg? But we have to work together to reduce these things at a, what they call reasonable and a productive way. Our ports have been distinguished by being the least efficient ports in the world. Royal Bank did a study, and they came out 369 and 370 out of 370 ports in the world. A lot of work needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Next, we have Olivia Slavens talking on 6.1. Olivia?
Hi, I'm Olivia Slavens, representing the Long Beach City College Women's Water Polo Team, who just won their state championship with 2024. I would just like to take this moment to thank you all for the opportunities that have arisen for us by you through our staff and through the members of our program, the entire aquatics and sports administration through this school. You guys have provided us a lot of opportunities, not just individually, but as teams. This group of girls has done something really special this year, not just by winning the state championship, but by creating a culture and an environment that has been really enjoyable to be a part of and to participate in. Special shout out Jen Conley and Bradley Adamson and Chris Oding. Our staff is really great, really phenomenal at this school, and we're eternally grateful for them and eternally grateful for you guys. Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Suzanne Engelhardt. And even though we have three cards, it's each speaker gets three minutes. So I have agenda item 11.2017 and 7.
Good evening. Congratulations, Women's Water Polo Team. You guys rock. Congratulations. My name is Suzanne Engelhardt. I'm the Faculty Association Union President. I'm speaking right now on item 7. Hello, I would like to, I noticed I was emailed the agenda Friday night about 5:27 PM, and I was said there was a change in the agenda. So Saturday, as I'm looking through the agenda to see what changed, I noticed that item 7, where under reports, standing reports, that for longstanding, the unions, the CHI, the Part-Time Faculty Union President Report, our classified colleagues, AFT Standing Report, and the Full-Time Faculty Association Standing Reports were housed under item 7. And I stumbled upon seeing that the change that was moved to item 17 under reports, the second to last item before the close of business to closed session. So I was just curious what, why this change? What was the steps to come about this change? It was kind of concerning, so I would just like to know if, you know, why it was moved and what was the process and purpose of its change. Thank you.
You had two other agenda items? You have a minute and a half or a minute still to go?
Yeah, I just didn't know if that was going to restart for the second item. Three minutes per item or just three minutes total?
Three minutes per speaker. You're the same speaker, so you get three minutes total.
Okay. Item 1120, the, I noticed that there were four sabbaticals that you all will be voting on tonight. So I thank you for seeing the value in those four sabbaticals, and I look forward and hope that they all four are passed. And then 17 reports, it reflects on item 7, that our reports were moved to item 17. All of us work long days, and so now our days have just been extended. And so I would just like, again, to understand why that change was there. So I thank you for your time. And again, congratulations on your elections to President, Trustee, and Tuck. Congratulations, trustee-elect Morton for, trustee Morton, I'm sorry, is your Vice President, and welcome to the Board of Trustees. And I look forward to finding out about this change.
Thank you. Well, now I'll move to item 5.2, which is a public hearing on the disclosure of the LBCC FA Initial Bargaining Proposal. At this time, the public should have the opportunity to express itself in regards to the bargaining proposal as described in item 12.1, future here in the, coming up in the meeting. The initial bargaining proposal from the Long Beach City College Faculty Association was sunshine at our board meeting on November 13th, 2024, in accordance with Government Code 3547. The public now has an opportunity to comment on that proposal. The proposal may be viewed on board docs attached as agenda item 12.1. Does anyone from the audience have public comment on agenda item 5.2? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close the hearing and move on to the next agenda, item 5.3, which is reorienting agenda. Is there any changes that we need to make to the rest of the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, we're going to go to the fun part of the agenda. 6.7 is recognizing our outstanding athletic student championship participants. Give yourselves big rounds of applause. As a, as a former Viking athlete, I know the hard work you guys put in balancing school, work, families, and so congratulations. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Munoz and then to Randy.
Thank you, Board President Intuck. You know, it truly is my honor to introduce Dean of Athletics, Randy Tutorp, to celebrate truly a historic year for Athletic Department, a year of records, resilience, and remarkable achievements. Dean Tutorp.
Thank you, Dr. Munoz. I want to start with just acknowledgement and congratulations to our trustees-elect tonight, President Intuck and VP Morton. Congratulations. VP Morton, welcome to the board and the team. Look forward to getting to know you better. I was a little nervous as Intuck arrived and engaged with one of our women's water polo athletes and very, you know, happily invited her to be a public speaker today on the spot. And what I want to say is, man, you stole my words. So next time I have to come speak, I'll just invite you in my behalf. Sincerely, as of, as most of you know, former student athlete myself here, assistant coach, head coach, athletic director, I've been affiliated with the college. I've been affiliated with the college for quite some time, and I think you know my my passion runs pretty deep. The, I want to sincerely thank Dr. Munoz and the entire board for the support that we've seen. You know, really, you know, throughout Long Beach City College's history, but in the last three years post-COVID, the support has been tremendous. So I'm very proud, excited to be here tonight so that we can share what, you know, we like to call the return on investment. And and it's big. So very proud to be here tonight. I'm gonna do what I don't do well. I'm gonna be brief. And I'm gonna allow my fantastic athletic director, Cal Stewart, to come up.
Appreciate that, Randy. Good evening, Long Beach City College family, Board of Trustees, Cabinet, faculty, staff, and most importantly, our exceptional student athletes. It is with immense pride and excitement that I stand here today to celebrate a truly historic year for our athletic department. The L B C C Athletic Department has achieved results that set a new standard for excellence. But not just at L B C C, across the state. For the first time in school history, our department has averaged a three point zero one GPA for the last three consecutive years, a record-breaking win percentage of eighty-one percent, and this year with just twenty losses all season. This fall, all six sport programs made it to the playoffs, a feat we haven't seen in four seasons. We are poised to send all eighteen programs to the playoffs this year, a vision that reflects the hard work, the passion, and preparation of our coaches and student athletes. We also proudly hosted the Water Polo State Championships for the first time in school history, and this fall, we celebrated our ninety-fourth state championship title. Our Women's Water Polo Program continues to be an unstoppable force. With a thirty-nine and two record overall, they were not only state champions, but regional and conference as well. On an eighty-three game South Coast Conference win streak, they have also claimed their ninth consecutive conference title. This team embodies the discipline, the determination of head coach Chris Oding and our most valuable players leading the way. Not only that, but men's soccer had a historic year as well. With a nineteen-three and three record, their first ever conference tournament championship, and took fourth place in the three C two A state tourney for the first time ever. Congratulations to the team, including goalie of the year and six all-conference honorees paving the way for this program's bright future. Next, our women's volleyball team, a team that etched their names in L B C C history. With a record of twenty-three and two overall, with their first state appearance in over twenty years, they were co-conference champions with standout awards like libero of the year and freshman of the year. Team, you have set a standard of excellence and resilience that will inspire future Vikings for generations. Our men's water polo team brought home the third place in state. Were also co-conference, sorry, conference champions in the South Coast Conference, have made us very proud with their competitive spirit and sportsmanship. And last but not least, with consistent success, our cross-country program was represented at state for the fourth season, also bringing home the fourth and fifth place at the conference, at the South Coast Conference Championships. These achievements are not just numbers. They represent the heart, the passion, and the perseverance of our student athletes, coaches, and staff. They're reminders of the transformative power of athletics, a power that builds character, fosters teamwork, and opens doors to a brighter future. As we look ahead to twenty twenty-five, I'm confident that L B C C will continue to set new records, inspire greatness both on and off the field. To the Board, Superintendent, and Cabinet, to our Viking family, thank you for your vision, for your leadership, and for your unwavering support. Together, we will continue to elevate Long Beach City College to new heights. If everybody could put their hands together one more time for a raucous round of applause for your Long Beach City College Vikings.
Thank you so much for the presentation and for being here. Does any of my colleagues have any comments they'd like to make before we go down and take a photo with everybody? I have three things I want to tell you all, if no one else. Hey, I just want to tell you how proud I am of all of you and the academic success you're having. You you may not know, but research shows and our data shows, student athletes perform better than average students, than regular students in your other classes. You have higher grades, you have more likely to graduate and transfer other students. So know that participating in athletics here at Long Beach City College is actually changing your life. Because if you get your A A degree and you transfer, now you have a sixty percent higher chance of getting your bachelor's degree, because you've already done it once before. And as you go on with your families and you go to work, you make at least a half a million dollars more in lifetime earning capacity just with the A A degree from Long Beach City College. So think, you know, all the skills you learn as a student athlete, discipline, endurance, teamwork, communications, all of that translates into the working world and to your professional careers. So know that the time you're spending in athletics and a practice, and sometimes the coach is yelling at you, it's all well worth it, and it's worth its weight in gold in the future. So congratulations, everybody. Let's come together. Oh, 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 we have a new trustee here that was in the back, trustee Malulu.
Thank you, trustee, Board President Intuck. I would like to apologize. I, my stomach was growling, and I didn't want my stomach to be growling on the mic and then it could be heard. I haven't eaten all day, so I went in the back to just really grab something real quick. But I was listening to all the public comments. I was sitting with Brad and Dinko in the back, so they can attest that the entire time I was trying to eat something, and I heard every single public comment. Thank you. I cannot not comment on how proud I am of our athletic department and the accomplishments that you've achieved this year. And I'm going to totally say that it's my going away present as board president for you to win and be so successful and come home with all this hardware. So thank you for that. But most importantly, I want to commend all of you for the hard work that you've done. Because being a student athlete is probably the most difficult thing. And I know because I've got a front row seat to four student athletes, and I know what it's like to come home tired from practice, from games, sore, body hurting, and then you have to crack a book. You have to open up some assignment that is due at eleven fifty-nine on Canvas, right? You you gotta, you gotta go on Canvas and you gotta submit your assignment at eleven fifty-nine. How many of you have had to do that? How many of you have been on the bus, coming or going to a competition, a game, a contest, and you have to study? And how many of you get invited because you win and you have a party and you want to celebrate, and you're like, I got a paper to write? Yes, I know. So the fact that you have to go through that in athletics and then still come home and win and show up the next day and you don't get enough sleep, you have no idea how proud I am. Like, you know, my my heart is split between activities, athletics, and theater, and I've got this strong passion for you. I also want to tell you a little bit about your leadership here, Randy Totorp, Cal Stewart. And is that Karen back there? I'm not wearing my glasses. Karen Vigilant? And and I apologize, because I know you just got married. I can't remember the new last name. Young, that's right. Congratulations. I know a little bit about what they're doing because I also have a front row seat to what Cal and Karen are doing in our ASU doctoral cohort. I don't think you're aware, but they're getting their doctorate degree and their focus is on student athletes. So here they are actually putting into practice and implementing practice and policy in the athletic department that is serving you and those students that you represent on various other teams. And they're coming up with ideas and innovation and intervention and strategy and all these. I could throw all these terms at you that we've learned in the last year and a half. But they're doing that, and it's it's work and field work that they're doing with you. So thank them and thank you and congratulations. And yes, a hearty go Vikings. There you go.
Shamanique ready out there? You ready, ma'am? All right, we're gonna move on. Thank you to all the student athletes and the coaches, athletic directors. Appreciate you guys and gals. Next, we're gonna go to our standing report, seven point one, ASB President Shamanique Harris. You have five minutes.
Good evening, Superintendent, Dr. My Munoz, S T members of Board of Trustees, faculty, staff, and my fellow students that are here today. And also want to congratulate newly elected Morton, right? Dr. Morton? Good. And thank you, Vivian Malahuulu, trustee Vivian Malahuulu, for staying another term with us. We really appreciate appreciate it. And our newly elected president and our vice president as well. For my report today, it's not gonna be the similar reports of talking about events and stuff that we have on campus. But I also want to make sure, within this last report for the Board of Trustees meeting, I want to acknowledge my ASB members, and I would like for them to stand today, please, the ones that are here. I want to say thank you guys so much for everything that you do. Without our student leaders on campus, we wouldn't have activities on campus. Because they're the one that comes out early in the morning, late at night, and just be here for our student population so everyone can feel inclusive on campus. So I want to say thank you guys for your hard work and your leadership on campus to everyone. I know you guys sat on a while ago. I also want to make shout out to our ICC president, Samu Perez. With the help of Sam, we managed to have sixty-five clubs chartered this semester. So thank you, Sam, and your team. And we also want to, we also want to thank Taylor Richard Robertson, Taylor, your advisor for ICC, for her guidance and support to you and your team. I also wanted to acknowledge our V A C president, which is Angie. She had to leave a little bit earlier with her daughter today. So on our board, we have a couple of student parents that, you know, give us your time and make sure our students are well-served on campus. She's not here, but I also want to acknowledge her and her team for their hard work that they have done in the community. They have had successful events like Homecoming, the T T C rebranding kickoff, and the Halloween Carnival on campus as well. Next, here, I also want to acknowledge Calvin, or rep of online evening students. Can you stand up for me, please? So everyone by now should know of our ASB After Dark. Calvin is the one that's responsible for ASB After Dark. I want to say this is the most talked about event on campus, but not so much that we are saying, oh, it's talked about, everybody likes it. But the students really appreciated that we're offering support to them in the evening. And thanks to the Basic Needs Department also for supporting us in the evening as well. And we have Marja for Student Service, and we have Lilian as well for ESL Department. We are actually working on more, we have a new initiative in in the works right now. We'll be having more report at our first meeting for next year, so you guys can get an update on what they're actually doing right now. And I also want to extend gratitude to advisor, faculty, and staff for their continuous support in helping us for the semester. I want to give a little recap. We had our students on hall, which was a success, because we had student came out, voiced your opinion, shared your feedbacks and all of that. And also, the biggest thing ever, the extended food service hours. I am really grateful for this, because I am an evening student myself. Now I can say, oh, I could go grab something to eat while I'm waiting for my class or before I enter my class. So thanks to the theme, the team so much for granting this extended opportunity for students to get something to eat in the evenings, because our evening student does matters to us. Now, we are working on, or we got approved, but still working on getting more information in for newly and easily accessible print and service for all students on campus. And also, within this semester, we got book grants being introduced to students who are not eligible for state or federal funding. We talked about our charter club. Within our charter club, I feel like the Rotary Club, we also got charter Rotary Club here at Long Beach City College. I've been to a couple of meetings to meet with the Rotary members in Long Beach, and we talked about, you know, rechartering a club on campus. So we have that going here as well. We also have successful meeting with Dr. Corral, Dr. Lee Douglas, and Dr. Kirkwood. Because I, when I run for president, I want to make sure we bring more visibility and engagement to campus. So I make sure I connect with the necessary faculty and staff so we could get things going. So I always meet with these faculty and staff on campus so everything could be in place. So thank you so much for your support. Dr. Kirkwood is here tonight. Dr. Corral is not here. Dr. Lee Douglas, thank you so much. And thanks to everyone that have supported ASB throughout the time here. I am not the president. Next year, you have to give me a little bit of extended time. I always have a little bit over. But thank you guys so much. I want to say thank you guys so much for your support. And I also just want to make sure our students came out today so you guys could meet them and know that they're here.
Thank you. I have a little bit of presidential power, but I cannot control time.
Oh, that's okay.
But thank you, President Harris. Great job. Appreciate all you do for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next, we're gonna go to our student trustee report, trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you, Board President. I wanted to congratulate trustee Morton and trustee Malulu for their election and and welcome them, welcome you guys to the board. My first order of business is myself, the rep of student health and wellness, along with the health, the student health department, are planning an event and giving away free contraceptives to students. Along with that, we're partnering with the city of Long Beach to have a free S T D S T I testing van on campus as well. And we'll also have what's called the Center of Long Beach and provide some support for LGBTQ plus students. The city of Long Beach has one of the highest rates of sexually transmitted diseases in California. And it's important that students know, know the resource, the resources that not only the city of Long Beach provide, but also the school. At the school, we have a student health center. It's called the clinic. And at the clinic for And at the clinic, for example, they provide free STD and STI testing. Moving on to my next order is I would like to report some good news. As previously stated, Dr. Munoz and the LBCC community has made it clear that they are committed to providing a safe, supportive, and inclusive community for every one of our students. State Senator Lena Gonzalez has introduced legislation that aims to protecting immigrants. The legislation aims to keeping immigration officers away from college campuses, and I'm very, very proud that this has been introduced. And I know that the board and a lot of the LBCC, our mission statement is for inclusivity and safety. And my last, my last order of business is I wanted to bring up the clemency of the corrupt judge, Michael Conahan. He was one of two judges in the notorious Kids for Cash scandal. In 2011, he was sentenced to seventeen and a half years for accepting three million dollars in kickbacks for sending twenty-three hundred children, some as young as eight years old, to prison. The reason why I'm bringing this up is we have a population of formerly incarcerated students. I have firsthand experience in speaking to for some of them, and many, and many of them are trying to do the right thing and change their lives for the better. I believe at times they are overlooked. I wanted to shine some light on how, for many, it is not their fault, rather it's the system itself that's failed them. And it's important that they get a second chance at life. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez. Next, we'll go to academic senate report. I know Dr. Jerome Hunt is out of town and not here today, so we will skip 7.3. 7.4 Classified Senate Report, Benjamin Chase.
Thank you, President Intuck. So before you, you're gonna see some photos for the year. It's basically a year in review. Just wanted to show that was at TTC, but it was PCC at the time for the graduation time. This is one of the last events that we held in the E-Building for it. It was the kickoff and libations that we had. You're seeing some of my colleagues from Enrollment Services here. Irma, Bianca, Iris, I said in the Senate Sergio, Angela before, Trellton. This was the photos you guys saw when we shared their fur babies. So this is kind of like a trip down memory lane for the meetings that we had previously this year. I want to thank everybody for sharing their photos out. Thank Dr. Corral and Dr. Munoz for acknowledging at the state of the college, the Financial Aid Office, and share this out again to thank them to make it possible for me to be here. There's my scholarship team for it. Shira in the lead for it. Thank them all for always working with us in the Enrollment Services and making sure our students have opportunities for it. Here, you can see our Innovation Award winner, Lulu, there as well with her team, and Lupe for it. Appreciate them. I said the high school matriculation. This is an updated photo for me because they did have some changes, so I just wanted to share out so everybody could see who some of the folks are that are out showcasing us. And Viv's not here, but I was gonna say this was honoring our honorable women. I said this was with the softball. Check in at the game for it, and so it was great to have them for that. So just additional photos of our colleagues for it and thanking especially for our commencement timeframe. I said that taking care of us and getting us out there. Dr. Richardson's here as well, representing our international students. My colleague Trellton as well in the Enrollment Services office for it. Again, more of my colleagues working down at the TTC location. A lot of these photos were shared at our Student Support Services Holiday Function, but just wanted to share out with you guys so you can see the team that we do have across campus for it. And we do have some fun occasionally for it. Most of the time, it's working for it. One of my favorite days, there's me and Dr. Douglas leading in the procession for graduation. Look forward to that again this coming year for it and my colleagues there. This was college day for it. We returned back to campus, future forward, so it was happy to have us there together, start building out. And they're not here now, but I wanted to show that we had support this year for our Women's Water Polo Team. We did take a break with the Classified Senate there. And Mike G's not here with us now, but I wanted to rub it in one last time that we did beat his former school twenty-five to eleven in route to their winning state title. Just some other events that we participated in in our classified were strong supporters of for Filipino at American History Month for it. TTC, again, Dr. Kirkwood, thank you again for your excellent leadership in making it possible that we had that event. I was happy to see some of the committee members there today at the swearing-in ceremony. So it was great to see that and showcase our family fun and just the atmosphere that that campus offers for it. Again, a bunch of my colleagues that went out to support that event and also from our event with Dr. Munoz celebrating classified for it. This is Dr. Baxter for her event, helping the homeless students fund. I said, great opportunity for us to be there. We're very happy to support that. I'm still mystified with the tricks that the magician did to us at a couple of events. I'm still amazed. I'm like, we had film of it and it still didn't really make sense. The Monster Bash tailgate, again, awesome, incredible time that was put on by Deb and her team for it and Sergio. This was a great opportunity we had. We had lunch with the Classified Senate. We were supposed to watch our women's soccer team from the skybox. Unfortunately, they switched their game time to six PM because it was their sophomore night, so we didn't get to have that, but we did have a great community lunch. Great opportunity for us for the Halloween party. Again, showing out, my colleague Ashley Williams is here, still supporting tonight. So thank you for being here, Ashley, Secretary for Classified Senate. From Dia de los Muertos, I said my two colleagues, Andrea and Michelle. I appreciate them for being there and supporting and showing out for the family love for our area. This is a critical photos that you have not seen before. This is my Enrollment Services Friendsgiving team. So you'll see a bunch of us there. So this is all of our units combined, just having some meal and good times and fun together and showcasing our love for one another for it. And so I just want to say thank you to them for letting me be here. And then a shout out to my colleague, Ian, well, I guess she's still technically my boss, but won't be for that much longer, Ivan Gutierrez-Sandeville, who's the now Vice President at San Bernardino Valley College for it. So I want to thank her and just showing some of the meetings we have already planned already. And this is the key thing for me, warmest regards and best wishes to our cherished Long Beach City College Viking family. Enjoy the winter break and celebrate the New Year safely. Appreciate you all, and thank you.
Thank you, Benjamin. Next, we're going to go to item eight point one Superintendent's Report, Dr. Munoz.
Thank you, Board President Intuck. And again, I just want to start off before I get into my report. Congratulations, trustee Dr. Renet Morton. We look forward to having you join the board, and I'm just, it's, I'm really thrilled to be able to work for you and with you. And again, congratulations, trustee Malahuulu. And again, thank you as a past Board President as well and all the service and work that you did. To kick us off with this month's report, I'd like to talk about some great news with the UCLA Transfer Alliance Program Scholarship. I am pleased to announce that LBCC student Daniel Kuzinstav has received a five thousand dollar UCLA Transfer Alliance Program Scholarship. UCLA provides this annual scholarships for transfer students who have been certified as having completed the honors program at their community college and are officially recognized as participants in the UCLA College Tap Scholars Program. Big congratulations to Daniel. One of my favorite tasks as Superintendent President is to connect with our amazing LBCC students. This month, I found myself remembering my own time as a student parent when I was able to have lunch with Robert, Dani, Mia, and Melissa, who shared their experiences and challenges as they navigate LBCC while raising their kids. They are truly the epitome of hard work and dedication as they seek to create better lives for themselves and their families through educational pursuits. Congratulations to our students. LBCC is proud to announce the twenty-four twenty-five League Excellence Awards presented by the League for Innovation in Community Colleges. The League Excellence Awards honors employees who exemplify exceptional teaching or leadership and whose drive to make a difference in the lives of students. This year, we are recognizing for the twenty-four twenty-five recipients, part-time faculty member Maria Crasenquina, adjunct chef instructor of the Culinary Arts Department, David Godo, TTC's librarian, will represent full-time faculty. Lulu Amante Tupua, Career Pathways coordinator, was selected to represent classified professionals. And Mayra Aguilar, project manager for education and multimedia technologies, will represent the management team. So let's give them a big congratulations. And we look forward to recognizing them at the Innovations Conference in March. Congresswoman Nanette Baragan delivered funding for student housing. We joined Congresswoman Nanette Baragan on December 2nd to celebrate the one million dollars grant in federal funding for the North Long Beach Student Housing Project. We are incredibly grateful to Congresswoman Baragan for delivering this vital Department of Housing and Urban Development funding. Our vision for creating a North Long Beach housing complex is another step closer to becoming a reality. Thank you again, Congresswoman. In late November, I had the privilege to serve on a panel alongside current Community College trustee Nan Gomez-Heitzberg and Dr. Alberto Roman, interim chancellor for the Los Angeles Community College District, at the California Community College League's Annual Conference. During our session, we discussed mobilizing Vision 2030 with equitable dual enrollment. I was proud to showcase LBCC's achievements in high school dual enrollment, made possible by the hard work and dedication of our outstanding staff, including Dr. Sonia de la Torre Nigges, Lupe Pessia, and their amazing team. Let's give it a big round of applause to them. This holiday season has been filled with celebrations and community spirit. LBCC participated in the annual Belmont Shore Christmas Parade and the Daisy Lane Parade with our students, staff, and families and friends. We also came together for the 2024 President's Office Holiday Party last week. Happy holidays, everyone. Continuing with the theme of the holidays, the foundation held their annual holiday party. At this year's LBCC Foundation Holiday Party, I had the pleasure of celebrating the season with our trustees, foundation board of governors, exec team, and deans at the beautiful home of Jerry and Jean Green, who have graciously hosted this event for the past five years. I want to extend my heartfelt gratitude to the LBCC Foundation and the Foundation Board of Governors for their unwavering commitment to supporting our students and programs. On the retirement front, we want to wish a happy retirement to Bob Raposa. And Bob's on the dais with us this month. So this will be officially his last board meeting, but we celebrated the remarkable career of Bob Raposa, interim associate vice president of Administrative and Business Services as he retires after more than sixteen years of dedicated service to Long Beach City College. His hard work and commitment have left a lasting impact, and we are deeply grateful for all he has done to support our students. On behalf of our entire LBCC family, we wish Bob a happy and fulfilling retirement filled with joy and new adventures. And if you did not know, Bob is an acclaimed author, and you're gonna write another book, right? That's what we're slated for, but I wonder, can you guess what genre Bob writes in by looking at that photo? Why don't you tell us, Bob?
Thank you so much, Dr. Munoz. So I write or published four archaeological thrillers, and I'm now transitioning to a new series that I'm gonna be starting releasing next year, and it's gonna be more espionage and kind of that type of genre. So, but thank you so much, Dr. Munoz. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob. I look forward to, I hope maybe we can bring you back to do a book talk and maybe a small audit in between, but I don't know. No, I'm just kidding.
Little bit of A, little bit. Thank you. Happy to come back. That'd be wonderful.
So as 2024 comes to a close, I just want to take a moment to extend my deepest appreciation and gratitude to all my colleagues, our employees of LBCC, our students, faculty, staff, administrators, our community members, and our very important Board of Trustees, who have really, I think, created a foundation for all the successes that we are experiencing this year. You know, this was definitely one for the books. As you mentioned, and I think earlier, we are being recognized as one of the top one hundred community colleges by the U.S. Department of Education for advancing equity. And that's a huge recognition, and you know, we'll find out in the next few days if we are, we made it to the semifinals, and we'll find out in the next few days if we are one of the finalists. But whether we get that finalist award or not, you know, I think we know that everyone that comes to this college and shows up every day shows up with so much love and support for our students, and we really are just, I'm really grateful. And so as we enter the holiday season, I just want to wish you all a very happy holiday. I hope that we all get some time to rest and rejuvenate because we need to come back, refueled, so that we can continue to support our students and our community. So with that said, thank you, everyone, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Munoz. Was that an espionage book? Yeah? Well, could be, could be. Exciting. Thank you. Next, we're gonna have a presentation here. We're gonna ask John Thompson to come up, our Director of Fiscal Services, to introduce CWDL, Certified Public Accountants, to give his report on the 2023-2024 District Annual Audit Reports. John, it's your turn.
All right. Thank you, President Intuck and members of the board, to give the highlights of our three annual audits for this past fiscal year. I am introducing the partner for CWDL CPAs. This is John Dominguez.
Thank you very much. Pleased to be here and to provide a brief overview of the results of this year's audit. We had a chance to meet, obviously, with the Audit Committee and go through the report in some detail, answer some really, you know, excellent questions, and go through really positive results for this year's audit. And before I jump into just that brief summary on results, just to express our appreciation, like we did with the committee, for the support of all the staff throughout the district. So it's not only an emphasis on the finance department as part of the audit, but we're really getting out throughout the campus in various areas for state and federal compliance. And so we had tremendous support for all of our requests, which are admittedly very burdensome as necessary, but they provided that support throughout the year, and we certainly appreciate that. So with that, I'll just briefly go over some highlights of the services and the deliverables we've issued, the components of the audited financials, a summary of our results, and a few key highlights, and then a summary of the bonds for this fiscal year ended June 30th of 2024. And so as we recap those services and deliverables, we're doing an audit of the district's financial statements for that period. We're also rendering an opinion on the district's compliance required by the State Chancellor's Office, as well as the federal guidance over major programs that we're examining and opining on as well. And then for Measure E and for Measure LB, we're doing both financial and performance audit for that period ended June 30th of 2024. And those components of the audited financial statements, we render four opinions throughout the district financial report, the first being our independent auditor's report where we touch on the accuracy and the completeness of the financial data, and we rendered an unmodified opinion there. That's the best opinion at our disposal and essentially means that the data that was provided to us, that we perform all of our audit procedures over, we felt was accurate. It was complete. It agreed to the 311 reported to the State Chancellor's Office, so that's a very, very good opinion. And you'll see the summary there where we're indicating that we believe it presents fairly in all material respects the financial position of the district. So very, very good results on that financial side. And then just walking through some more components of the audit, you've got the management's discussion and analysis that is a really good comparison of the June 30th of 2024 results compared to the prior year, 2023. So as you scan through that section, you'll see some good narrative information, explanations for reasons for certain changes in balances and operations. And then our basic financial statements are gonna have our net position, our statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in that position, as well as some other OPEB net position detail and also changes there. And then our remaining financial information is gonna go through the notes. We spent some time in detail going through a kind of pensions, volatility, some other elements of those financial disclosures, and then going through our required supplementary information, and then those other independent auditor's report. I mentioned we render four opinions. The final three are there on pages ninety through ninety-seven, a summary of our results, and then the district does add some additional supplemental continuing disclosure information, which we went over as well. So with that, I'll recap those other three opinions, and they're displayed here in our summary of auditor's results. So we had also unmodified opinion on our assessment of the control environment, the district's compliance with state procedures as well as federal procedures, where we went over the student financial aid cluster, the Trio Program, as well as some of the remaining COVID-19 state fiscal recovery funds that were spent down here in the fiscal year. So very, very good results on compliance and controls throughout the report. And just briefly, as we kind of get here toward the end, a few financial highlights. We did talk about the net position, which did increase by forty-four million, and we put a little context on that, that again, this is a full accrual accounting, so this does contain all the long-term asset and liabilities, so your capital assets, the pension liabilities. And so while we do see that net position increase, which is a very positive thing, we wanted to point out that these are unrestricted, or sorry, these are not unrestricted, these are restricted funds that are largely held for payments on future long-term debt, payments of future OPEB and pension liabilities. And so we did see there in the general fund, there was that fund balance increase of the two million, so just wanted to touch on that. And then the primary expenditure of the district obviously remained salaries and benefits, which increased to just under two hundred million. The capital assets had an increase to five hundred and forty-seven million, obviously a result of just that continued investment in construction, building renovation, and some equipment purchases. And then finally, we just noted an increase in receivables due to some state activity. And then finally, we just noted an increase in receivables due to some state activity as well as some student activity and some state construction projects. So summary of those long-term liabilities. We did touch on the pension liability, which you'll see increased by 12 point, just under 4 million in the prior year, and we talked about that just because of some volatility. So this is another disclosure that's in the notes of the financial statements, but we, you know, again, look at that net pension liability as it currently stands for both the STIRS and PURS systems there, is the middle column. And if those projections from their actuarial reports are not met by 1%, you can see to the left, some significant increases in the district's proportionate share of that liability in a positive environment where they might exceed those expectations, you'd see the decreases to that liability to the right. But just touched on that with the committee because of some of the, again, volatility, we might see some fluctuations from year to year, but again, putting some context on that, that this is a balance that is, you know, largely out of the district's control. This is simply taking the STIRS system and the PURS system, underfunded liability, and the district's proportionate share. So we're kind of at the mercy of those systems, at the mercy of the markets and how those change, but nonetheless, a significant balance impacting the district, so we wanted to go through that and highlight that to you. And then finally, on the bonds, we're issuing both financial and performance audits. Measure E had no expenditures for the current fiscal year. Measure LB had 35 million in expenditures, of which we tested 60%. And our conclusion was that those expenses examined by us were allowable by not only Proposition 39, met proper control environment, but the district was in full compliance. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about our procedures or results from any of the audits this year.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez. Any trustees comments, questions? Trustee Malauulu, recognized?
Thank you, Board President Intuck. John, thank you, welcome. I've served on the Budget Committee for several years, and, I'm sorry, the Audit Committee for several years, and I've learned a lot in the process. One of the things that we discussed in this year's cycle, I won't be on the Audit Committee next year, but one of the things is how, we had a serious conversation about the new administration coming into the White House and the potential changes that'll be coming down the pike for community colleges in general, for California, and of course, you know, a county as large as ours and the allocation of resources and how that could impact our audit. We also, I appreciate that you've always answered my questions, and we also got to discuss things that people don't usually consider when it comes to audits, the role that the team, you know, we have an amazing team that sits through these audits. There's a whole department in our staff that oversees the audits and the budgets and the contracts and all the different partnerships that we have. So thank you for that, and I just, for the benefit of the public, I think they need to be aware of how much is involved in making sure that we have a successful audit and year after year that we come through with not only good recommendations to continue doing what we're doing, but with no findings, and I think that's the most important part. So thank you to everyone that's involved in the department. Bob, I know that you've been overseeing that because of the role that you're playing, so thank you to everybody. I appreciate it, and I know you're going to miss me next year on the Audit Committee, but you're in good hands with Dr. Baxter.
Any other comments or questions? I do want to just thank you, Mr. Dominguez, for the presentation. One item on the, I think, the accruals, was it 40 million or 44 million? Was that because of cash flow or?
So that was actually the district, kind of some efficiencies in the management of its long-term debt. So the long-term debt liability came down pretty significantly, just based on the timing and the structure of those liabilities. So I think 36 million of that 44 was from decreases in long-term debt, and then there was increases in some current assets, just based on timing of some accruals, some receivables, and other cash-related items, but primarily driven by some efficiencies in long-term debt there.
Thank you. And the last question, I know we recently passed a new bond measure, AC. I don't know how that translates, the process of it getting included in the future audits. Is it not until we even do a bond issuance that will be audited, or is there some preparation?
So it's going to be triggered by that first issuance. So you've got the authorization from the voters, and as soon as there's issuance of those funds, that'll trigger, obviously, the formation of, you know, Citizens Bond Oversight Committee and triggering the audit and some other various things there. So we'll look forward to monitoring that and reporting to you when that activity starts.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move to Section 10 on the agenda, 10.1, Board of Trustees Reports. We'll go with trustee Baxter to start.
Thank you, President Intuck. I have had quite a life. I had to fly to Florida last week because my sister was in the hospital. I slid on the carpeting and hit my head, and I have like 10 layers of makeup on my face, and I can't wait to get home to wash it all off. But it's, I am in perfect shape, went to the hospital, no problems whatsoever. I must have a very tough head because I had no problem. But President Intuck, I hope you don't mind if I leave after my report, because I have to get up to go to the airport tomorrow and fly out at 6:00 a.m. to go back to Florida to bring my sister out to California for Christmas, and she won't get on a plane by herself, and so I'm doing that. Anyway, so my life, I've missed a lot of things, and I feel terrible because this is such a wonderful time of the year, but I did go to the Daisy Lane Parade on Saturday night, and that was fantastic. In my youth, probably 40 years ago, I was very involved with the Daisy, you probably don't know this, the Daisy Lane Parade, because the North Long Beach Lions Club wanted our homecoming court to be in the parade, and so I was in charge of bringing the girls down and getting them on the float and staying there, make sure they're okay. But so I brought back kind of happy memories about that, and no longer do they have the beautiful girls on the float waving. Anyway, so that was fun, and I enjoyed being at the parade. I have sad news to say in that my former boss, Wells Sloniger, who was the Vice President of Student Services, has passed away, and because it's the holiday time, they're not going to have a memorial until January 12th. But he was a great boss, a great friend, and he came to LBCC in 1977, and we worked together from that time on and just cared about the students, really was a wonderful leader, a smart guy. He and I applied for the dean position, and they picked him over me, and he said to me, Ginny, I need you. Don't, you know, don't be upset about this because I need you, and I need you to be involved. And I thought that was a very kind thing to say, and he was a wonderful dean, and he should have been picked, so, you know, I could understand that. And it's kind of the same tonight, and I'll kind of leave on a sad note. I'm disappointed that I wasn't elected president, but you know what? My life goes on. I have plenty to do. Unfortunately, I'm on a lot of committees and on a lot of boards, and so I have a lot of meetings at night, but I love being on this board, so I'm not going to give up on it, even though I don't feel real good right now. But congratulations to Udoak and to Annette, and I know you're going to do a great job, and I look forward to the year.
Thank you.
So to end the meeting in memory of Wells Sloniger.
And you can provide a spelling to Michelle, make sure we get it correct for the minutes. Yes, thank you. Next, we'll go to trustee Malauulu.
Thank you, trustee Intuck, Board President Intuck. Thank you, everyone, once again. After our last board meeting on November 18th, I attended the District Audit Committee. On December 2nd, we had the outstanding check presentation event at the North Long Beach Learning Center with Representative Baragan. Just for those of you that were not in attendance or haven't been able to watch that, it's important to know that those checks don't just pop up, that, you know, our elected officials at the county, state, and federal level don't just wake up and say, oh, let me give, you know, $1 million to Long Beach City College. It doesn't work that way. This is a lot of lobbying on our part on behalf of the district. It's relationship building, it's knowing how to play well in the sandbox, it's knowing how to reach across the aisle, extending the olive branch, working well with people. It's also going out to Sacramento, going out to Washington, D.C., having meetings where we don't just show up and say hi and take a photo. There's actual work to be done. There's rolling up your sleeves, there's data to be presented, there's information to be shared. So when money becomes available, when these representatives are in a position where they need to think of what to do with that money, Long Beach City College is at the front of their mind. We're at the forefront of, you know, where can I spend this money where it will be put to good use and where it will be fruitful, where the money, the contribution, the donation will be productive. So we're grateful to Representative Baragan because she understands the hard work that we're doing here, and through her generosity, we are able to invest in student housing in North Long Beach, which is what the money will be used for. And she saw our plans, she saw our hard work, and we're grateful that she thought of us because we're not the only community college in our district. She could have given the money to anybody else. On December 6th, I attended the Mayor's State of Business Event luncheon, which was great because a lot of our LBCC partners in workforce development were there, and it's also really a good opportunity to refocus on the work that we're doing moving forward. On December 7th, I had the opportunity to be a judge in the Belmont Shore Parade for the first time. Let me tell you, I was freezing. Sitting in one place for three hours is very different than walking a couple of miles in the parade, waving and talking and shaking hands. I was not prepared for that. I dressed to walk around the parade, which is what I've done every year, but sitting in one place, I needed gloves, I needed a blanket, I needed, it was just, I was freezing. But it was a fun experience seeing 130-something parade entries walk by, so that was a lot of fun. On December 12th, I attended the Greens Holiday Party hosted by the LBCC Foundation, another wonderful event. Thank you to Paul Kaminsky and his staff. On December 14th, we had two events. One, I have a photo for, I'm going to have Dario play that in just a second. The second event I attended was the Daisy Lane Parade, which is a parade that happens in my trustee area. It goes down Daisy Lane in Wrigley Neighborhood. It's a quaint 70-year-old tradition. You know, this was the 40th anniversary of the Belmont Shore Parade and the 70th anniversary of the Daisy Lane Parade. So that just goes to show how long these community events have been happening, and I love seeing Daisy Lane Parade because we are walking in front of houses, right in front of where people live, and people come out and they set up parties in their front yard, in their driveway, on their front lawns. You could see families have annual Christmas parties that day, so it's just a ton of fun. But earlier in the day, I was at the, and I'm sorry I keep saying PCC, it's going to take me a while to get used to it, I know. So it's the Trades and Technology Community Learning Center Campus, TTC, for the Tamale Fest, and Dario, if you could play that, show that photo there. Dan is the gentleman on the left, and Sal is the gentleman with the turquoise shirt, the aqua shirt. They're the organizers. They also brought us the tacos and, I don't want to say tequila, but tacos and tequila festival earlier in the summer. And then we've got the International Tamale Festival in December, Councilwoman Suli Saro, Vice President Dr. Alicia Kirkwood, and then our outgoing trustee, Herlinda Chico. Let me just tell you, the reason why that event is so important is it's another way for us to bring the community on campus. I was disappointed that we didn't table that event, and hopefully that won't happen again, because we had almost 4,000 guests at the TTC campus that we could have given information to about our various programs, enrollment, the trades. I just think it was a missed opportunity, but I get it. It's December, it's the holiday, it was actually pretty cold that day. So hopefully, in the future, we will not miss an opportunity to host and greet people on our campus with tabling. Other than that, thank you, everyone. Good luck on your finals. I'm sorry, finals already finished, so enjoy your holiday break for those of you starting winter session. And I want to end that I finished the semester, I have straight A's and a 4.0 still, and it was a lot of work. I'm barely standing, and then we have a few weeks off, and we're back in January. So happy holidays, have a safe New Year, and we'll see you in January, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, trustee Zia, for your board report.
Thank you. I have to, after my board report, leave because I'm just really not feeling well with my flu and the surgery, but just a couple of touch points to report on. This Sunday, Vice Mayor Emeratus Cindy Allen and I had an event, Discover LBCC in Winter Wonderland. It was a wonderful event, it was really cold, and I think that's where I caught my flu or cold or whatever. This is pretty miserable, and it was wonderful to see trustee Baxter there. She came, even though she was, she had an incident and fell, she was still there, and it was wonderful to see her commitment, and I want to just echo what she said. You know, trustee Baxter and I have served this institution as board members for the longest time out of all of you, and what you did tonight is another example of classless conduct displayed by you in the past. It was her turn to get presidency, never mind that you've placed a moratorium on me, but it was hers. But then again, and this is the same tyrannical regime under the Intuck-Malaulu regime that have accused her of being QAnon conspiracy theorists, and she.
Please maintain the form in the meeting.
Class and grace, and still was kind to you, Mr. Intuck. I hope you enjoy the power trip that you have over this. It was hers, and it was rightfully hers, and it was shameful what you did tonight. That's all I have.
We'll go to the next report, trustee Morton.
Good evening. Excited to be, give my first board report. I had the pleasure of participating in the December 7 Belmont Shore Parade, which was in my district. That was fun, the first time I've actually been able to participate in the parade, been attending to the, attending the parade for many, many years, and that was a lot of fun to represent the college as a trustee, trustee-elect at that time. And then I had the pleasure of attending the holiday party here and meeting the employees and the staff and all of the festivities. It was very fun. I had a really, really good time meeting everyone in that environment, in that space, and I look forward to many more of those events. And then on December 14th, I had the pleasure of attending for the first time since I've lived here, since the first time I've been coming to Long Beach, is the Daisy Lane Parade. Again, a very, very fun parade, very welcoming, and I echo the comments of trustee Malauulu with how open and warm and just festive that parade is, walking by the community's homes and seeing everyone celebrate and just come out and have a wonderful time for the holiday. So I had a wonderful time participating, again, representing the LBCC community as the trustee-elect, and I look forward to that parade again, and that concludes my report.
Excellent, thank you. And I'll close out the reports today from Area 1. Great meeting. Thanks, everybody, for being here today. A lot happened this last month. I was able to be there in North Long Beach for the million-dollar check donation from Congresswoman Baragan. She's been a longtime friend of Long Beach and represented us, I think, in her fourth term. I first got to know her when she was on the Hermosa Beach City Council about a decade ago, so we're really thankful for that, and also want to give a shout out to Carl Kemp for helping making that million-dollar donation happen. The public affairs and marketing area helped reach out and cajole and request and send all to the staff to make sure that happened. So I want to give a big shout out to Carl Kemp and his team for making that happen. Thank you to the faculty. Dr. Morton and I attended a CTA dinner on December 2nd to learn more about priorities and staff around the state and with other newly-elected trustees and returning school board members, or school board members and trustees there. So thank you for that dinner, that was very nice. I was able to attend the Mayor's Tree Lighting Ceremony downtown. Very well-attended event. I think there was more than 5,000 people there. If there's a place to table and get our word out, it's at the Tree Lighting Event next year, so just put that a note there. I was able to go on the Belmont Shore and Daisy Lane Parades. I always feel like it's a Long Beach family reunion. I see people from elementary. I see people from elementary school and high school and old neighbors. It's really a great time to get together with folks in different parts of the city. I want to congratulate Dr. Munoz. This month is his three-year anniversary. It was December 2021 that we did the final vote. So congratulations, Dr. Munoz. You know, the League of Community Colleges came out with their annual superintendent survey, and it averages 3.1 years that there's a superintendent staying in the job. So yeah, you're, you're, you're almost above average. One more month, you'll be above. But just wanna congratulate you on that. And lastly, I attended a very important event we had at Long Beach Trade Tech. We hosted Orelay, was formerly known as the Immigrants Rights Coalition here in Long Beach. And we brought together about 100 community members. The mayor and myself were there. And really trying to be welcoming and hosting, let them know that Long Beach City College is a safe space, but address a lot of the fears and concerns and anxiety that is out there about what is to come in 2025 with the new federal administration. But it was a really good opportunity. It was, it was bilingual and translated in Spanish and English to talk about some of the concerns. Some folks thought, because we had officers in green uniforms, that they were ICE agents. And so be clear that anybody you see on campus is a Long Beach Police Department employee. They're under the city's Sanctuary Act requirements. They're under the California laws. That we do not have any ICE members here on campus. It was also important, we let folks know that regardless of your immigration status, you have a constitutional right to higher education here in California, and that we will protect that right. We will not disclose information. We will not respond to deportation requests or orders. And to know that we are already doing training, protocol for, for staff of what to do to make sure that we protect students and their families. I know some folks were hesitant to fill out their FAFSA, financial aid, this year because they didn't want to disclose their home address. And so talking about alternative avenues apply still. Don't leave money on the table. Maybe use a neighbor's address or another family member's address. But you can still... Or they don't have an address. 4901 East Carson. You know, we'll, we'll find your mail for you. But it was just really good. They had legal representation, talked about legal aid funding, talked about protocols like, you know, don't let your kids open the door because you don't know who's gonna be at the door. And just, you know, some best, best practices and basic legal rights review. But it was a really important event. And I think as we go into next year, we all remain focused on there's gonna be outside dynamics happening that we have to be mindful of and do our best to make sure that we're uplifting our students and their families and making sure they get the resources they need to be successful. And with that, I close my board report. And this will close Section 10 on the agenda. Next, we're gonna move to Section 11. 11.1 is the opportunity any board member can remove an item from the consent agenda because it's considered separately. Is there any items to be removed from the consent agenda tonight? Seeing and hearing none, we'll go to 11.2, Approval of the Consent Agenda. All items listed under Consent Agenda will be acted upon in a single motion and a vote. That'll include items 11.3 to 11.21. Have a motion, and I need a second.
Second.
Been moved by trustee Malauulu. Seconded by Vice President Morton. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing and hearing none, let's take... I guess we can do a voice vote now that we, we don't have... We do have quorum. We had two trustees left. But we can do a voice vote of the remaining trustees.
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, the consent calendar is adopted. Moving to next Section 12 on Human Resources. 12.1 is LBCCFA Initial Bargaining Proposal to the District. This is a re-opener for negotiations. This is an action item. The Board of Trustees accepts the Long Beach Community College Faculty Association Initial Bargaining Proposal for Reopening Negotiations of 2023 to 2026 as submitted. In accordance with the applicable state laws and regulations, it's recommended the following public comment. The Board of Trustees accepts the LBCCFA-LBCCD Initial Bargaining Proposal for Reopening Negotiations with the District for the years 2023 through 2026 on the successor agreement on items below, specifically Article 10, Hours of Employment and Service Load, Developing More Accessible Course Offerings and Services to Meet the Needs of Our Current Students. Update the current contract language accordingly. As prescribed in Government Code Section 3547, the initial bargaining proposal from LBCCFA to the District was sunshine at the Board of Trustees Meeting on November 13th, 2024. Members of the general public were given the opportunity to provide comment to the board. The District and employee organizations may commence now the collective bargaining process. I need a motion and a second on this item.
So moved. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Trustee Dr. Morton.
Has it been moved?
Second.
It's been moved by Vice President Morton, seconded by trustee Malauulu. Any discussion on the initial bargaining proposal? Seeing and hearing none, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the 12.1 is adopted. Moving to 12.2, this is Initial Bargaining Proposal for LBCCFA Reopening Negotiations as well, but it's an information item. It is the Faculty Evaluation Section, is posted on Board Docs. Does not require a vote this evening. Item 12.3 is Revised Exempt Salary Schedule effective July, January 1st, 2025. This is an action item that recommends the Board of Trustees approve the Revised Exempt Salary Schedule effective January 1st, 2025. Is there, I need a motion and a second to advance.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Malauulu, seconded by Vice President Morton. Any discussion on the increase? And just to clarify, this is an increase due to the state minimum wage increase that goes into effect next year. With that, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the salary schedule is adopted. Moving to item 12.4, these are employment contracts. This is also an action item. The Board of Trustees approve, are recommended to approve the employment contracts for the following folks, and I'll read off their names and information. Christina Barrios, Director, Extended Opportunity Programs and Services, EOPS, a term of December 2024 through June 2027 at a salary of $163,732. Eric Bercera, Director of Student Equity, a term of January 2025 through June 2027 at a salary of $150,656. Bernadette Gonzalez, Director of Disabled Student Services, Student Programs and Services, DSPS, for a term of December 2024 through June of 2027 at a salary of $163,730. Tyler Jackson, Director of Volleyball Operations, a term of January 2025 through September 20... I'm sorry, June 2027, at a salary of $118,982. Candace Jones, Vice President, Administrative and Business Services, for a term of January 2025 through June of 2027 at a salary of $297,771. Alex Long, Director of Title V Grants and First Year Experience Programs, a term December 2024 through June 2027, a salary of $135,246. A Megan Martinez, Director of Softball Operations, Women's, a term of January 2025 through June 2027 for a salary of $118,982. Starla Thomas, Director of Strong Workforce Programs, a term of December 2024 through June 2027 at a salary of $122,673. And then finally, Rick Von Kolden, Associate Vice President, Human Services, a term of January 2025 through June of 2027 at a salary of $241,082. Each of the contracts are attached. I'll need one motion and a second to adopt all of these employment contracts.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by trustee Malauulu, seconded by Vice President Morton. Any discussion on this item? Yes, Rick makes.
President Intuk, I would just like to congratulate everyone who served in interim roles and was awarded the permanent position, and also those that have had their contracts renewed. Thank you for the hard work that you do on campus. I particularly would like to thank the Director of Athletic Operations. I know there were several on there, volleyball, softball. Thank you for all the hard work that you're doing with our student athletes. As you can see, your hard work pays off. We had a room full of champions today. So thank you, and please keep up the good work.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, look forward to our new Vice President of Business Services and a new Associate VP of Human Resources. So some key roles filled. Oh, is Alex here? All right, Alex is here in the audience. Thank you, Alex, for being with us. With that, we'll take a voice vote to adopt all the contracts. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the contracts are adopted. Next, we move to item 13, Academic Senate, 13.1. They have no items this month. Academic Affairs, Section 14, 14.1. We have no items this month. Section 15, Administrative and Business Services. We do have the District Audit. The 2023, 2024 District Audit Reports for Measure E from 2018, Measure LB from 2016, Performance Audits, and Measure E from 2008 to 2008, Measure LB 2016 Financial Audits. This is an action item that we'll need to adopt. We had the presentation earlier tonight. And if I can ask for a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Vice President Morton, seconded by trustee Malauulu. Any discussion on the audits? Seeing and hearing none, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the audit reports have been adopted. Moving to Section 16, Student Services. We have one item, 16.1. This is a first reading of Revised Board Policy, Administrative Procedures, Chapter 5, Student Services. Board Policy 5010, 5011, and 5030 are the first reading. And then there's attached informational items on the administrative procedures, 5010 and 5030. These are related to admissions, concurrent enrollment, high school and other young youth, and fees. And so those are attached on Board Docs for anyone who would like to read those. This is an information item that does not require a vote. Moving on to 17. 17, Committee Reports of the Board, 17.1. Didn't we have any committee meetings? Audit, we already had it? All right, all right. We'll go to 17.2. We have LBCCFA Bargaining President's Report. Suzanne Engelhardt for five minutes. Suzanne.
Thank you. Hello, Suzanne Engelhardt, Long Beach City College Faculty Association President. I wanna start off by just thanking everyone that I work with. Loy, it's been a pleasure and continues to be a pleasure. We go to some hard places, but that's the nature of our job. But I appreciate the professionalism and working with you and just working through the emotions and the issues together. Thank you, thank you. Kendra, thank you. You're, I've just known you a short time, but I appreciate you. I appreciate how you respect and encourage your faculty and the ideas that you have and coming from the trades and strong workforce. I just look forward to being able to be a small part of the great work that you are doing and continue to do. Noel, good luck. I hope you're having a good time. I know you are. Michelle, thank you for that helping, you know, getting information from us to the board as appropriate. Sunny, thank you for your work with the homeless. I know she is gone now. And Dr. Baxter for her just constant consistency on the board. Mike, thank you for the work that you continue to do for this college, for the students. Your work is noticed. I know that at times, you know, because of our positions, again, there's things that we have to struggle through and work through. It's my job to, to policy and procedures and the contract with our members, and I take that seriously and fiercely. And, but it's been a pleasure and continues to be a pleasure working with you. And, and again, the work you're doing at this college and for our students, it is a pleasure and a delight. I've been here through many different superintendents, several, and a board, so I appreciate the work you're doing on that. So thank you. Trustee Udoak, again, you know, we have conversations. There's a lot of unresolved things that I hope one day we're all able to get out on the table and work together. But I appreciate the work that you do. I appreciate just seeing you and bringing your son to places. I appreciate seeing that. That is admirable, especially coming from siblings of six and my mom dragging us around from community college to the university as she tried to complete her higher ed degrees and raising six kids. So that's always a delight to see. Congratulations on your role as president. Trustee Annette Dr. Morton, thank you. It's been a short while. I am truly... congratulate you and glad you are on this board. And I appreciate, even the short time, your response, your willingness to engage and meet and get to know our faculty and the curiosity just to even attend that, the Bay Valley Dinner. I appreciate that, and I look forward to encouraging our members to reach out and getting to know you and you coming to meet them as well. So welcome. Trustee Malauulu, you know, I know that the best way to contact you is through text. So I do know that there is something that is keeping us from communicating. I truly hope one day that somehow that could come in the air so I could know how to move forward, to engage all board members on here on this. But I truly am, do not know, but I, I do wanna appreciate you and the example you set with your family and your accomplishments. And that is truly a model for the young women and men that see the hard work you do and still continue to have an intact family and just putting them first. Student trustee, thank you for your advocacy and your work being here. It's truly a model for future students. Yes, so thank you for that. Bob, good luck. I'm gonna try to read one of your books here. Hopefully, it's on audio, so I could read it on the road. But it's been a pleasure working with you. Thank you for your patience and your perseverance as you interact with our faculty members. And just thank you for the work you've done here at Long Beach City College, and best to you. And what is it, three or six books before July?
Three by July.
Yes, so he, don't call him. Lee, it is always a pleasure, again, that you're being available and working for the best of our faculty, which is the best for our students. And again, sometimes we're at odds, but we continue. I appreciate your professionalism and working with you. It's always a pleasure. Jerome's not here, but again, it's just always a pleasure working with my colleague Jerome. And Ben, you as well, you do a great job and a work. And I just wanna, in these last five seconds, I wanna thank the faculty that are serving our students on the front line and the great work you're doing. I wish you all a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy Kwanzaa. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Next, we'll move to item 17.3, AFT Bargaining President's Report. Robert Remetta, is Robert here? All right, we'll move on. 14, 17, 17.4, CHI Bargaining Report, Crystal Huckabee. Is Crystal here? She is not, we will move on. Next, we go to item 18, Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. I do have one public comment card from Suzanne Inglehart for, from staff, for non-agenda items. Suzanne? All right. Moving on, we do have closed session this evening. We have public comment on any of the closed session items. This is nineteen point eleven. Do we have any cards for anybody on closed session? Anybody would like to speak? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to section twenty. We will now adjourn the open meeting to go into closed session. Thank everyone for being with us this evening. At this point, we will adjourn and we will be back out afterwards. So thank you.